All right. Good evening and welcome to the September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Easton Meadow Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order. We have Marilyn absent tonight and John is participating on Zoom, so we'll do roll call votes for everything this evening. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
And I'd ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all the events going on both near and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, I have to announce that this meeting is being video recorded by LCAT. And if there's anyone else in the audience, if you could identify yourself. Seeing none, we can continue. So, public comments, we had someone signed up Christina Brooks regarding our prohibition marijuana in Easton Meadow. Is she in the audience or on Zoom?
I spoke with her last week and she was going to come, so.
Well, if she happens to show up, we could always circle back to that, but we do have the letter in our packets that she had sent of Jeannie and I, so. Have that as supporting reference. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, town manager's comments. Is there any counselor with a comment? All right, seeing none, town manager report.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, so we'll start by thanking the Easton Meadow Fire Department for hosting another September eleventh ceremony, once again. Well attended. Providing a sort of a great tribute to everybody we lost that day. Uh, it always makes me think of how much I'm appreciative of our servicemen and women. Both the Armed Forces, but also Fire Police EMS. Keeping us all safe every day. And again, there were many in attendance, many people here were in attendance, some of our. Legislators, obviously, were there as well, so thanks to everybody. The comments were moving. And just a good reminder of that we can't ever forget what happened that day. Still emotional, sorry. Attached, I had put some more of the weekly reports from the school. Just to since the last time that I gave a report, but. It looks like they're still moving around along very well. We've had, the weather's cooperated greatly, obviously, that's helped. So everything's looking good. The school site is pretty flat and clear and ready for. Concrete and steel and sort of that first package that. Really, we'll see things starting to take shape out there in terms of the new building, so that's very exciting. That's looking like mid to late October or something like that, so. We started getting the, or spending our, the gaming funds that we got, the grant. Chief Williams got a bunch of the radar speed signs, DPW's getting ready to install those. We also got some money for a feasibility study to connect the sidewalk. From right in front of the high school down Maple and to connect at Westwood, which I believe stops at Palm Street. Uh, and which, you know, we spent so much time talking about that cross, that crosswalk and the sidewalks on Maple this year, starting school, so. That would actually be a tremendous loop to close. And, and I mean, you can get anywhere you want at that point, basically, in the downtown area, so that'll be nice. And then the rail trail. Let's get right into it, so. The, later this month, we'll begin work on our digital equity planning grant through the MBI Mass Broadband Initiative. We actually had the first meeting at three thirty today. Kim Lee Horn is helping us out with that, the consultant, to try to see. Identify local digital equity targets, populations and resources to address the needs of the populations in town, so. Should be valuable prep work that supports the town's transition to fiber, so. We're excited about that. Thank you to Kim Lee Horn as well. Couple CPC project updates. The front portion of the barn at Brown Farm has been demolished and removed. Thanks to DPW for getting that done and their contractor MJ McKernan Enterprises of Foxborough. They were out there Wednesday last week and it was done by Friday. I think they just got their equipment out of there, so I mean, they were there for, for three days. We also signed a contract with Berkshire Design Group for the sports field study on that property on Chestnut Street. We have a kickoff meeting scheduled for next week to get a timeline. Once the leaves start falling, it'll be easy to do some, some survey work and kind of get a lay of the land out there. CPC deadline, November first for applications for this round. It's typically October and April, but. There was sort of a change order and they had a reorganization of the board and I think they were trying to get all the existing products, projects sort of in line. And so they bumped it out a month, which should give us a little time to get some things together. There's a lot of interest on those, on those funds as well. Joint meeting with Wes Mass Development and Mass DEP to discuss Seventy Maple Street last week. It was sort of a preliminary meeting for DEP to sort of let us know what their expectations are, sort of what we plan to and can do. And what that schedule might look like. And again, like I said, we, we're working on a brownfield grant that's due in November at some point, so. That, that'll be nice to at least get a plan together to clean up that site. For now. Upcoming events, coffee with the town manager, October second, ten thirty at the COA. The Rotary Clubs celebrate EL, October twelfth, that's from eleven to four at Center Field, that's always well, very, very well attended, so. Mark your calendars, third annual Oktoberfest. Put on by the Rec Commission, that's October nineteenth, twelve to four at the aforementioned Brown Farm. A little more open up there now. And a center town district, this is the public engagement meeting, October twenty first, from six to eight here at the COA. We expect that to be well attended again. We'll have all the data from the surveys done. And, and I think the, the goal there is to really map out the location that we want this own to be housed. And then sort of keep pushing forward on what do people want, what do they don't want, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, so. We expect that to be another well-attended event. That's all I got for tonight. We, we. We got some, some good news, good news. We will, I have some action items, I guess I'll let you in on later for our October eighth meeting. We got a ton of things to go over from. Free cash certification, Schedule A was also, was also approved by DLS today. We'll have all, we were planning on having a report for all that on the eighth. We got it way earlier than we thought we were going to, so. But that came in today. I know most of you saw that email. So, that's, that's it for tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Tom?
Yeah, through the chair.
Sure.
I'm just curious how the pricing came in up at the Brown Farm for the download. Is it better than what we'd expect? It was much better than what we expected, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right. Saying nothing else, we'll move on to communications correspondence and announcements. The first item there was a letter of support for PVPC. For a HUD housing grant. In my error, I was going to bring this before you, before I submitted myself as, you know, signing on to the letter, but I misread the. Deadline of the letter and I thought it was before our next October meeting. But that said, it was, you know, fairly straightforward request that they were just seeking some federal grant funds, which would hopefully help out both, not only PVPC, but potentially our town, so. Seems like it would be. The more, the better.
I thought I was gonna do that quick too and do it, but it's okay. We, the manager's office is in support as well.
And then the second thing, as Tom mentioned, you know, off the press today was the certification of free cash, so we'll have more upcoming on that, but. It was a good thing it came in sooner than expected.
Yes.
Sooner than we were prepared. I have nothing else under that and we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to orders of the day licensing matters. The first matter is approve a change of DBA application from Barrera Incorporated to. Where Incorporated doing business as Masatlon from previously doing business as Torito at six twenty one North Lane Street. So we have the application for that. For us, which was originally submitted to Jeannie. And then at four o'clock this afternoon, I believe you said, we received an updated version of that with some differences. Given that new information and the fact that none of us have had a chance to edit and make sure that it's all appropriate in an order. I'm personally, I'm not in favor of approving the change of DBA at this point, but I'll certainly leave that up to. All of you on how we should proceed with that. I don't know the agenda.
Through the chair, what are some of the changes? Can you elaborate?
So the original application that came in, in September, September nine, had the manager signing the application. With the corporate vote for the manager and the new papers they submitted was the president signing the application with a new corporate vote. So I, I'd just like to review it and make sure the president has listened on the corporate structure that the Secretary of State Office has and. Go through it before I even give it to you guys for review, so that's why I'd have, I'd like more time and. I told the applicant that, that we might not be able to prove it tonight because of that, so.
So if we're in favor, we will move that to our next meeting on October eighth, we're considering approving the change of DBA.
You for the motion.
Sure.
I move that we continue. The approval of the DBA application from Barrera Inc. to our next meeting, which is on October eighth.
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. We will continue that on October eighth. Next. Item is approval of a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostles Church for fundraising for seminary, insist their emotion.
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostles Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road for fundraising for seminarians event. On October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to eleven PM.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And we have item number three, another one-day liquor license. Also for Vietnamese New Year celebration fundraising.
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostles Church. Two thirty-five Dwight Road for Vietnamese New Year Celebration fundraiser event on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six to eleven PM.
I will second. Either me or John.
Motion's been made, seconded and thirded. Is there any further discussion? All right, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Great. And item four, we have two one-day liquor licenses for Saint Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for the Taste of Greece.
I make a motion to approve the two one-day liquor licenses for Saint Luke Greek Orthodox Church on four hundred Prospect Street for the Taste of Greece. Greece on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from two to eight PM and October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from eleven AM to eight PM.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great. And then one more, one-day liquor license for one-way brewing for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest.
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for one-way brewing for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest. Sixty-four Hamden Road, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from eleven thirty AM to five PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great. So, financial matters, we have approval of a bill from a prior year for the clerk's office. For an invoice from the reminder publishing, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a bill from a prior year for the clerk's office for a three hundred and ninety dollar invoice from the reminder. To publish, publish the FY twenty-five capital projects.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great. Moving on, approval of minutes. We have approving the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four special meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yeah, I was asking.
Okay, one abstention. And John?
I'm a yes.
Great.
And approval of the September tenth open session minutes.
We approve the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four open session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph? Anna?
Thanks.
Abstention. And John?
I'm a yes.
So then moving under old business, we have a proposed bylaw amendment relating to commercial kenneling. Says Article eleven definitions, Article eight special permits. And Table three dash one, the schedule of use regulations for first reading. This was under old business because this was something that had previously come. Before us many months ago. But language hadn't really been crafted at that point. It was more of a discussion point. But since then, the planning board has gone through and submitted a recommendation to us, and so we're. Starting the official reading process at this point. So included, we have the memo from the. Planning Department, which I can read, so then there's to us and Jeannie the Fourth from. Rob, the Director of Planning, on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. At the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board. The board reviewed proposed amendments to the Town of Easton Meadow zoning bylaws. Article eight special permits, Article eleven definitions, and Table three dash one schedule of use regulations, see attached. The board voted unanimously to recommend that the town council would even adopt the amendments as presented. The text in blue indicates language to include while red striked through text indicates language to be deleted. The advertised public hearing and the board's decision on this vote is duly noted in the minutes in the recording of their September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, respectfully submitted. Robert Wachilla, the Director of Planning.
But through the chair, before we go on further, I need to abstain from this article. I have a financial interest. I've done work there and so I don't think it would be appropriate.
Thank you, Ralph. So at this time, is there someone that would like to read in the proposed amendment?
I can do that. Okay, Article eleven definitions, we have. Subsection four fifty dash eleven point two terms defined. Animal control officer, an appointed officer authorized to enforce Chapter three fifteen of the Easton Meadow general bylaws, Mass General Law, Chapter one forty. Subsection one thirty-six A and one seventy. Um, I don't, I don't have to read the red part that we've.
We do have to say it.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Yeah, we're saying that.
From removing, um. Any structure or premises in which dogs and or cats are kept boarded, bred, or trained for a commercial gain. Instead, we are adding an establish, an establishment used for the boarding or overnight stays of cats and dogs that are not the property of the owner of the establishment. At which such services are rendered in exchange for consideration and in the absence of the owner of any such cat or dog. Provided, however, that commercial kennel or boarding shall not include an animal shelter or animal control facility. Nuisance dog, a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. Or, two, by excess, excessive barking causing damage or other interference. A reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person. But such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all circumstances. And pet daycare and grooming is the same. Relieving?
Yeah, that's the same.
Okay, the caring for maintaining grooming, training and safekeeping of pets of a domestic nature during normal daytime business hours. This does not include overnight kennel services. Okay. Article eighteen, you said? Is that? Eight. Special permits, subsection four fifty dash eight point sixteen, commercial kenneling. The following standards and conditions shall apply to commercial kennels as defined in subsection four fifty dash eleven point two. The business owner shall have kenneling license issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And shall be in good standing. Two, the business owner shall follow all relevant, relevant local, state and federal regulations. Three, in regards to this section, subsection four fifty dash eight point sixteen, the term animal shall refer to cats and dogs exclusively. Four, the appropriate facilities, enclosures and safety features shall include, but are not limited to the following. A crates, enclosures appropriately sized to allow for an animal to comfortably stand, turn around and lay down fully stretched. Such crates, crates slash enclosure cell have a raised floor or bedding to keep animals off of the bare floor. And or the bottom of a wire crate. B floor shall be non-slip and easy to clean. C, the facility, facility shall have adequate ventilation and. Administration as to prevent humidity and odors from building up while allowing for air circulation. D, proper drainage to prevent still or standing water from collecting in any enclosure floor and play areas. E, facility shall have climate control and be habitable all year long. F, crates, enclosures shall have safety features including latches, locks, et cetera, to prevent accidental escape and injury. G, appropriate facility shall be onsite for the cleaning of animals. H, the facility, facility shall have a source of fresh drinking water. I, outdoor areas dedicated to the free roaming of animals or outdoor play areas shall be fenced in at all times. J, no features of the facility shall present any harm, both immediate or long-term and long-term, to animals that are boarded and kept overnight at the facility. Five, if the commercial kennel includes the boarding of dogs, follow, follow, shall also apply, following? I'll also apply. Maybe? A, solid walls, partitions, covers must be erected in between crates. Enclosures in order to ensure separation, both physical and visual between dogs. B, staff to dog ratios shall be one staff for every ten dogs. C, play groups shall exceed no more than ten dogs and shall consist of dogs that are in the same size group. D, same size, oh, size groups also be, same size groups shall be categorized as shown below. One, small dogs up to twenty-five pounds. Two, medium dogs, twenty-six to sixty pounds. Three, large dogs, sixty-one pounds and above. E, there shall be separate play areas for each size group. F, no toys besides toy balls are allowed within play groups. G, no shared feeding area shall exist and dogs must eat separately in order to prevent resource guarding and potential dog fights. H, facilities shall have exterior green space to allow for dog potty breaks. I, outdoor play areas shall have the following fence sites. I. Are one, at least four feet in height for play groups consisting of small dogs. Two, at least six feet in height for play groups consisting of medium and large dogs. J, aggressive, reactive and or nuisance dogs shall be. Isolated from other dogs at all times. Six, the planning board may include the following conditions. A, hours of operation. B, pickup and drop-off times, these can also be staggered. C, frequency of animal control inspections. D, total number of animals allowed at the facility. E, soundproofing of the facility. All right, now we've changed. The table three wants schedule of use regulations. So bylaw number four, land use classification, commercial kennel. And we went for special permit and I, industrial.
Yes, and then under standards and conditions, see Article eight.
Okay.
Yeah. But then.
And that's it.
Something changed.
But, right, right.
The readings.
No problem. Honor.
So then. At this time, how would, I mean, we would still have to take a second reading at some point, but. Up to the council, whether we would like to refer to a subcommittee or take different action at this point.
So through the chair.
Chair.
Just to note, usually anything to do with zoning is referred to the Planning Matters Subcommittee. Anything to do with just a general bylaw goes to the General Bylaw Committee. It does say in our rules and regulations that it shall be submitted to them.
So we should do that before the second reading? Okay.
So is there a motion?
We need to make a motion that's submitted today.
We should.
Bylaw Committee, yeah.
I'll make a motion to submit.
Planning Matters.
Planning Matters.
And Planning Matters?
Yes.
So I make a motion to submit. Recommendation, this recommendation to the Planning and Bylaw Committees.
Just the Planning Matters Subcommittee.
Planning Matters Subcommittee. Don't ever say that.
Okay, questions been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Staining?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great.
Would you?
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Right. Okay.
Do you want to read that? Wanted to make sure we gave you like everything. You're all good.
We are for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so new business. Our first item was to discuss the Health Department's recommendation. Of an increase to the mattress disposal fee from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars, so they had submitted back on September nineteenth. Memo to us stating that on September fourth, the Board of Health met and voted to recommend to the council that. We increased the mattress disposal fee from fifteen to thirty dollars. Of course, it's the council's. Authority, given the fee fine and penalty schedule that we approved and that big long one that we have. Read multiple times lately. As to whether we make any sort of change. My thought on the matter is I, I don't love having to go through. Outside of the normal budget process, since we're already going to be doing this annually. And the town manager ideally is recommending in his budget, any increases or decreases in revenue. And it would be an additional cost to us doing this out of band, having to advertise public hearings and so forth to change the bylaw. To increase it. Overall, I don't necessarily have a problem with. Changing the fee, but I don't know that it's appropriate at this time outside of the, the budget cycle, but certainly open to.
If we didn't do it now, when would it?
It could be included in the upcoming budget cycle that'll probably kick off in the next month or two, but it wouldn't.
Part of the budget was approved, it would, whatever, that second reading of the fee schedule before.
Part of the budget was approved, it would, whatever, that second reading of the fee schedule before July first, so that everything would kick in on July first.
So it would be really the next fiscal year that it would take effect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's.
The only, the only shortcoming would be that this price has changed because the price of moving mattresses has changed, and if we need to supplement that budget at some point. I don't know that it's going to be that big of a deal, and we can't wait. But that, that could be something that we have to move some money over to get rid of mattresses at some point.
So one way or another, we're spending.
Right. Jeanie, do you know how much it on average costs us to advertise something?
Uh, let's see, this is probably between hundred and fifty and like that.
We'd have to recycle a lot of mattresses. Make up that difference in the meeting.
Yeah, I do. I think it's cleaner to do it all at once. The fee table.
So just, I had a discussion within me today with regards to this. She said we've been averaging about forty-five, at least forty-five mattresses every month. Yeah, which surprised me because I was thinking it was three or four.
Yeah.
And I would have been agreeing with you on that. Except for the fact that at fifteen dollars times forty-five a month is six hundred and seventy-five. Times going forwards would be looking, what, six or seven months? It'll add up to quite a few thousand. Which, like I said, completely and totally took me by shock.
Yeah, which they've already budgeted for the majority of that. I think the price only went up to seventeen or eighteen, but we've never factored in the two hundred and fifty dollar fee it takes to get rid of the can.
And what she's been saying now is that two hundred and fifty dollars, they've been doing it twice a month. So you're looking at the five hundred dollars plus the cost of the mattresses, and that's why they were looking to go to the thirty. Again, my initial thought was just like yours, can we just subsidize this until we get through? I mean, the other option would be to send a quick email around to departments and see if there was any other fees that needed to be adjusted based on this year. And then do them all at one time.
I'm certainly open to.
And or in that memo to the department heads, explain that going forward, if they, if times are such that they anticipate fee changes, they need to get them annually to you know, in the spring, so.
That's usually, most of the budgets are based on that, and it, and it's always going to happen that way. I think this, you know, they changed their hauling fee.
No, we understand.
What I mean, so, but, yeah, now I'm, now I'm struggling to think of anybody that would have changed their fees mid-year or, or wants to, but what if we can get a better number? You know what I mean? Like crunch all those numbers out, figure out how much we actually budgeted for, because it's not forty-five mattresses times. It's, no, but I mean, we already budgeted for
No, no, no.
A whole year's worth of mattresses.
Right, right, right.
Just only went up a little bit.
Yes, I'm saying it's not forty-five times the difference fifteen, it's three dollars.
Yeah, something like that.
Did, did Tammy mention, other than, you know, forty-five a month? The actual amount from last year, did she get into that conversation?
So maybe that.
Always, and she was like.
I never guessed that.
Yeah. There's really nowhere else to get rid of your mattresses. I don't know.
No, there isn't.
Tried to get rid of one, but.
I'm just kidding.
They just give you a new one.
They take the old one.
They assume you're returning it. They have the best policy in America. They give you a new one. No, uh, would you, would you feel more comfortable if we got an actual number there? So, I mean.
I, I would like to more accurate numbers. She did send me an email after I talked, just showing me some municipal drop off charges.
Yeah.
And Long Meadow is thirty dollars, they're the cheapest. And for municipals like Hampshire's forty to fifty, Franklin County's thirty-five, Rockport Gloucester, both forty. But if you go to private pickup, Casella Waste Management is a hundred dollar. Casella's a hundred, Waste Management's a hundred, USA Recyclance a hundred dollars, Republic's a hundred and fifty. So, so at fifteen dollars, it was really, really on the low side.
Right.
Thirty fall within, but again, like you said, I think if we get better numbers and then find out from there, if it's, if it makes sense to even do it at this time.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can certainly get, we could make the plan that we'll get better numbers, and we could always put a first reading of the change for October eighth, so that we can get the ball rolling if everyone feels appropriate with that, and if not, we now we stop, not do that at the next meeting.
Action item.
Yeah, we got that.
Yeah, we can do that, done.
Great. Any other discussion on the? The second one is discussion of chapter two fifty, planning board for a bylaw amendment to allow for associate members. I don't want to steal your thunder, Tom. I don't know if you wanted to provide the.
Uh, yeah, there wasn't, obviously, there wasn't much change to the bylaw itself. I mean, every, everything kind of got moved down one item, and we added number two in, and I only added uh, two fifty dash two in because the zoning, the Board of Appeals bylaw, their second line was uh, associate member. So I wanted to, we've been trying to keep everything sort of in the same format. This was simply because of sometimes the schedule and how special permits are advertised. If we don't have, well, you, you need a, a super majority for a, for a special permit. So if there's only four planning board members in attendance, and there's a special permit on the docket, it has to be unanimous. So, and even worse, if there's only three, we have to postpone the special permit hearing. So this was just to add an associate member for these things that require super majority votes, they're not on the planning board. Other than, they're sort of waiting in the wings for uh, Rob or Alex or whoever to say, hey, listen, two people aren't showing up tonight, are you available? Like I said, Board of Appeals has two. We, we kicked it around a little bit for conservation, which we've been trying to fill. And we actually kicked around knocking that to five and adding associates, but, you know, obviously, these are volunteers. People have things, people go on vacation, this is how it goes, right? So this is just so, we're not, the thought was to just not penalize an applicant because we didn't have enough people at the meeting. That we'd have somebody there just in case that could, that could hear the, the agenda item.
And it was based on, not just the just in case for a hypothetical situation, but knowing that there's been situations that's happened over the past year.
In the last month or so, yeah. It's, you know, it's, things are on a five-person board, I mean, only one person has to be out, and then you're asking the applicant if they want to go through with it, because you're going to need all of us to say yes. So most of them get, get kicked. But yeah, just an idea we were floating around, just wanted to hear everybody's thoughts.
Through the chair?
Sure.
You sure you want to hear my thoughts?
Of course, no, that's why I, that's why we're here. This is why this is our process.
So I'm in, I'm totally against an associate member. An associate member is just someone basically to fill in to vote. And on the planning board, you really, it takes you at least a full year of being on the planning board to bring yourself up to speed with our zoning bylaws. And that's really if you're putting the time in to do it. They're a lot more complicated than, than what people think, and it's not like you're just sitting down crafting a quick vote on something, should we, shouldn't we? If, if extra members are needed, I would rather see you increase the board from five permanent members to seven permanent members. And fill the positions that way, and that way there, you would have seven members, four would be the super majority.
Five.
Yeah, two thirds, yeah, five. But it still gives you the ability to have a couple of people out instead of just one. I just, I, I being someone that sat on it and being the chair of the board, I think it's more important to encourage the members and set up a specific date. Hey, the first Monday or Tuesday, whatever it is of the month, or the third. You have to be there on that. I mean, if you can't make it, you know what? Especially if you're missing multiple meetings, then maybe this really isn't the board for you.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Any other thoughts?
Through the chair.
Sure.
Just kind of along the lines, my, my question was going to be, will the associate member have an expectation to be at all the meetings?
So that's how it is for ZBA. They have two associate members and they're, one of them might not be full right now, but they're, they were always at all the meetings. And that's something that we can require. That the other sneaky part of this is five members of the planning board get a stipend for being on the planning board, and does that associate member does that? So there's sort of a budget implication as well. But I would expect if we were giving someone a stipend to show up, that they would show up. But to Ralph's point, yeah, I mean, planning board is first and third Tuesday of the month, like every, every month. That, 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 you should be able to fall, but again, you know, we're, we're, we got two chairs empty tonight, and we have the same schedule too. And then there's like, things happen, and like I said, I, I feel bad when people call and they're like, hey, you know, we're, we're unable to do this for this long because you guys had to move the special permit hearing. Because there wasn't enough people there. And again, we were just reading off the, the special permit, like there's a whole section in our bylaw that's special permit, so. It would be limited to what that person would do. But, yeah, I, I would expect, I, I guess I always expect attendance, but.
Do you have somebody in mind for?
Uh, I have, I have at least two on file from the last time we had to fill the, the position. We keep them on file so that if there is an opening or an emergency or something, we can just reach out instead of having to advertise again. Since we just heard how expensive advertising is. So, uh, yes and no. Yes, I have somebody on file, but that person may say, I don't want to be an associate member, I want to be on the planning board. Move it to seven, right? I mean, MGL allows up to nine. So if we wanted to go that route, that's fine. Or we, or we just stay the way it is, and so be it. If somebody's not there, and you know, there's a certain expectation with everybody during the summer with vacations that, you know, the meeting schedule gets a little, little wonky. But it was just my, my thought to just have somebody that, that could be around more than just, hey, we need you, you know, and they don't know what's going on, and they just vote yes or no, like that, I, I, that, that's a very good point. Like the, there's no, that's not what I want. I don't want somebody that's not paying attention to just show up and vote because we need another vote. One way or the other, really, right? So, and I guess that would be if, if the, if the thought was that we could tweak the bylaw like that, that we could add other parameters to the language. Yeah. Attendance, yeah, for sure.
I wouldn't be necessarily opposed to it, as long as it was kind of like, I think, would you just felt out that, that person be engaged and attending and knowing what's going on?
Fair, no.
So through the chair, if the person was supposed to attend all the meetings anyways, why won't you just make them a full time?
I'm open to either.
Give them a thousand dollars.
To me, that's cleaner.
Yeah.
Just expand the size of the board. Because then the expectation is obvious. You have to attend, you have to do your homework, and at some point, as Ralph has said, it takes a while, that, that's the one board that really takes a while to come up to speed on.
Yeah, no, yeah, I get it.
And it does have a big implication on the town.
Exactly.
I mean, we just had one, the medical marijuana, I mean, that took months and months of going through. Tons of reading on it and just hammering it out, and like I said, if the board's not fully engaged, it doesn't happen. Or you're constantly coming back to adjust and change because, well, we didn't get it quite right the first time.
So, so do I hear the appetite would be for a seven-person board instead of alternate members of the planning board? Is that, would there be more of an appetite to have that conversation if I were to bring that one back next time?
Yeah, yes. I have a.
No, no, yeah.
For Maryland, so.
Yeah, I'll just say I'm slightly different in that, and that I understand the concerns about. And I wouldn't want it to just be someone you call up last second and hey. For no on this thing.
Bring in the lefty.
But I don't know that expanding the board really gets around the problem of lack of consistent attendance, though. Because at least the alternate member, you're filling a spot that you know is going to be vacant just for that evening, whereas you could expand the board to seven members, but if two still don't show up, you're still at the same problem of hopefully all of you are voting yes, otherwise you're getting denied. But I also see that if we currently allow it for the zoning board of appeals, which is arguably just as important as the planning board, why not be consistent in both?
So.
That was going to be my question, what are the other boards that have the associate members?
Uh, just the ZBA.
Okay.
And I think, again, you could make that argument, that, that, that board is, is, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to put brakes on everybody, but they're actually setting precedent in town with their decisions. So that's why they have backup, so that they're, they're, they're basically setting like a court hearing in the library or in the COA, wherever they are. And so they make sure that they're always full to hear the case. Because they're looking at it, again, they're not necessarily looking at it, our, our zoning bylaws only, they're looking at like case law, which they're all sort of bursting, so it's, it's like apples and oranges a little bit. But that's why I'm pretty sure, and, and I looked for it a little bit, and I have to do a little more research, but they specifically call out associate members in MGL for, for Board of Appeal, for Boards of Appeal. It doesn't say it's allowed or not allowed for a planning board in MGL. So that's, again, I think the thought was to be consistent with the, the ZBA. Again, all good points, I mean, there's really no wrong answer. There was a problem that we identified that I'm trying to fix, and whether that's with associate members like the ZBA, or we make our planning board bigger so that, you know, it, it is the one that we get the most applicants for, planning. Whenever there's an opening on planning board, that's the one everybody wants to be on. So that's a little more. No, I, that's what I mean, and I think if we went to seven, it would fill, it would get full. With, with people that are engaged that would be there almost every night. And again, I, it sounds like I'm picking on the planning board, and I'm not. I know there are human beings who have things that are going on in their life, just like the rest of us. But it was just a, we just had a few issues recently with attendance, and some applicants were less than pleased about going to be continued, which is, you know, it's a long process anyway, when you make that first phone call to get on an agenda. With, with butter's notifications and, and, you know, advertising and all this stuff, so. Again, I think both, both sort of opportunities provide a solution. You know, again, it's up to, it's up to you and the bylaw subcommittee or whoever to, to decide what's the better option. Maybe planning board has some thoughts on the matter too. This was like an administrative idea.
So one more question. Did I hear you correct that you weren't sure under mass general law whether associate members are even allowed on the planning board?
No, no, it doesn't say they're not allowed.
But does it say that they are allowed?
Correct.
So it says, yes, they are allowed, or it just is quiet?
It doesn't, it doesn't say, there's less about planning than anything else. Which is weird.
Even sure if they're.
Well, we can have up to nine members, and whether or not they allow associate, it, if, if mass general law typically doesn't say you can't have it, you're probably good.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Bring in the lefty.
Well, again, before we before we do anything, we'll have all these conversations, and like I said, I do have to, I do want to dig in a little further into general law, but that was a rabbit hole I didn't want to get into last week, so. I figure we could just have the conversation.
Did it help?
Yeah, no, hey, listen, I I I I like the discourse. This is the point of the process is. Somebody has an idea and then everybody else talks about it and then we come up with the actually the right idea, right? So.
Through the chair, I just had some quick thoughts. Um, as also another former planning member, I agree with Ralph. I think like. It took solidly a year, maybe maybe more, but still was even learning a couple of years in. Um, you know, the tricks and the trade of being a planning board member. I think. I I sort of though agreed with Connor's point that i- if we were to expand it to seven, you would still run into those. You know, statutory issues where if instead of one person being out could conceivably being two people out. So then you'd run into those super majority things. I I'd maybe love to see if. We could get a number on how many, I guess, cases have been affected or how often this happens. Is this, you know, just a handful? You know, and it was just one time, so then maybe we don't necessarily need to do anything long term, or has this been a chronic issue? I know this. Occasionally came up when I was on. Um, I'm definitely open to alternatives, but I did. Um, I do sort of understand where Ralph is coming from as well. So I just would maybe want to know before. Going forward, just to see maybe what the actual scope of it is of of the problem.
Um. If there's seven and two are absent, can they go forward?
Yeah, but again, it's a super majority would be five out of seven, so it's still got to be.
So you would need more than two people to be absent, which I don't know if it's like. Like, I feel like it's more likely to have one person absent. Makes more right, but to have more than two, I don't know. I feel like the seven, I feel like seven makes more sense. Because then you can have two people absent and still go forward, or if you just have one.
But you also have if the five will satisfy super majority if they all vote the same.
Correct. They typically would ask the applicant at that point.
Okay.
Say, listen, we're we've got some, we've only got exactly enough votes here that you need to to get a yes.
Yes, okay.
You want to, do you want us to just continue you?
Right.
Which they always say yes, because I mean, you noth- nothing's unanimous, usually. Hence the discourse.
Any other discussion? I guess to be continued awaiting some other.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Next step was to discuss the holiday meeting schedule. So the first part of that is our next meeting was October eighth. But then, as a newer development, we won't have a second meeting in October. Uh, for a couple of reasons. One, I'm on vacation one of those last weeks in October, but then also I was invited. Uh, by our state Senator Jake Olivera to attend the Citizens Legislative Summit. At the State House for a couple of days. And so that'll take me away from town and being able to run that second meeting.
Which would be October twenty ninth you're talking about?
Yeah, it'll be the twenty ninth, so no matter which of the two we move the meeting to, I wouldn't be.
I think we should. I think we're gonna have enough for that agenda.
But then the the next one would be normally November twelfth. Which is fine, that doesn't conflict with anything. The following one, when I was just building the placeholder calendar, is the week of Thanksgiving, but I wanted to discuss if that was. Okay, since it's two days before Thanksgiving, or if people wanted to move that to a different week or day.
Single, I'm good with it.
Because they meet on Tuesdays.
It's it's mostly for you.
Oh, the Zoom.
Yeah, the only one that we usually have to by our rules and charter is have the normal second Tuesday. Of the month, but the the second meeting can be anytime we want.
Yeah, our Zoom only has one. Pretty sure going is one out of five.
Is everyone okay with the Tuesday, the twenty-sixth that was normally scheduled?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we'll still proceed with that one. Then the December one, of course, would be. The twenty-fourth Christmas Eve, which I don't think any of us. Have that. So that could be up in the air because who knows how much we'll have in December around the holidays, but.
But we'd have the tenth as a regular.
We'd have the tenth as our regular one. It's just if we were to have a second one, we'd probably have to pick. Much different time to.
Right.
To meet there.
Usually around the holidays, it's pretty thin.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then historically, we've just done the one in in um, December.
Yeah, and I think we'd get back to normal in January since.
Yeah.
Things would be clear. So we can probably, unless something crazy comes up, plan to not have the second one.
In December.
In December, and we'll just have the two in November and the one in October.
I think that's what's fine.
Okay.
So October eighth.
October eighth.
November twelfth.
The twenty-sixth and then December tenth.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Two. All right, so that's it. Well, your holiday schedule, action items, the two things I had will. Come up with answers to some other questions and potentially language for the first reading for the mattress fee change. If you have any questions for the legislative update, which will be at our next meeting on October eighth, you can send those along to. And she'll over those off for us. Does anyone have any other action items that I'm forgetting?
No, I just have a lot of things for you to check.
Yay.
Should be.
Plan a longer meeting is what you're saying.
We'll have them coming back to the DBA.
Who's coming for legislators?
All three of them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's next.
All right.
Let's see, mostly good things.
Yes. Yes.
Christina had the dates mixed up, so I'd emailed her early on and she's on her way here, so I don't know. What that means with how many minutes it takes for her to get here.
Hmm.
Would you entertain a short recess? Minutes to get here.
Sure.
Okay.
I will.
Chair, if you just call one.
I will call a recess for five minutes and we will return at seven oh five.
Thank you.
Welcome back. At this time, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. So I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do. And then we will return to open session. Motion's been made in second. Make further discussion. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I am a yes.
Great. Hey, welcome back. We are returning to open session at seven fifty-five. And I will entertain a motion to return to public comments on the agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion's been made in seconded. Further discussion. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great, thank you. So under the public comment portion, uh, we have a speaker before us. So if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Christina Brooks and I live at fifty-six Woodbridge Drive or Road, depending on. How you. Uh, in East Long Meadow, half the time it's a sad road, sometimes it's a drive, but under the really cool, nice little bridge, um, not too far from here. I've been there for almost three years.
Great. And which, welcome to speak for a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Um, so I just wrote a couple of things um, down. Um, so for my background, I've been working in the health insurance and hospital fields for the last fifteen years. Um, for the last five years, I've been in the cannabis industry as a director of wholesale. Um, out of Kingston, Massachusetts, um, where I wholesale cannabis to other dispensaries throughout the state. Um, and I wanted to come to you guys today because there is currently a ban in East Long Meadow for delivery and for a dispensary. Um, I know that originated in two thousand and sixteen when the state was letting it open back up to, um, you know, to for sale. Um, so in two thousand seventeen, the very first dispensaries opened up in Massachusetts. Since then, we've surpassed about a billion dollars in sales. Um, the tax for Massachusetts between the state and the city comes to about twenty percent, which means that two hundred million, two hundred million dollars has been collected. Since two thousand and seventeen. Um, so I just wanted to bring it up to you guys today because my thought is that, you know, there's a lot of revenue. That the town can make um, based on taxes um, for cannabis. The closest cannabis dispensary is in Springfield and West Springfield. About twenty to twenty-two minutes away. Um, our median income in East Long Meadow was a hundred and one thousand dollars with about seventeen thousand people living in. Um, our town. And I just thought, um, it would be a great time to bring this up now that, you know, it's. Been legalized in the state of Massachusetts. It's surpassed cranberry sales. We see it's a big cash crop in the state. Um, and it's a good time to possibly, you know, bring up the motion where you'd be interested in. You know, thinking about opening a small boutique-like dispensary in, you know, the town of East Long Meadow now that we know, you know, it's it's a strong um, field. It's open to, you know, stay and wanted to just kind of bring it up to the town and see what you guys' thoughts were on possibly, you know, overturning or getting. More information on, you know, what that would mean for East Long Meadow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone, normally it's public comment, is there any question while she's here that anyone has like to ask?
So is there anything in particular you would be interested in? So I know. Um, right now through the zoning bylaws, we don't allow the growing of it. We don't allow basically any portion of it. Um, I mean, is your thoughts to open it all up or is it?
It would just be a retail dispensary at this point. So there's enough grows in Massachusetts where there is an abundance of cannabis flower out there. So I don't want to be part of driving down the cost of cannabis because there's just so much in the state that you can grow, being such a small state. But because we don't have a dispensary in our town, there are a lot of people who are going out to Springfield, West Springfield to Munson. Or people that are passing by from Connecticut, you know, either in the roundabout that um, are looking to purchase and are surpassing our town. Um, which interests me in opening a smaller boutique dispensary in the town since it's not oversaturated like other locations.
At this time, we'll take it under advisement.
All right, perfect.
Thank you for.
Ask for some follow-ups in a future meeting or?
Why don't you reach out to the manager's office and if you'd like to try to propose a bylaw change, um, we can sort of put you on the right path. How's that?
All right, sounds great. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Back up.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
We are adjourned at seven fifty-nine.